Al Monroe's zoning board of appeals, agenda Tuesday, September 26, 2017, convening at 7:30 Monroe Senior Center, 101 Main Road in Monroe, New York. The more would rise for pledge allegiance. You hear me? Public hearing, A Campbell, use variance located off Pine Tree Road, section 24, dash block one, dash. Plan Elizabeth Campbell owner, decision regarding rehearing, use area variance for upstairs area in RR1AC.
Good evening. My name is Steve Reinicki. I'm here with Elizabeth Campbell. We're here to explain exactly what it is that we're requesting. We were able to get actual building plans for the structures that are there. We do not have the survey. We're on a waiting list and we felt that we've been putting off, off, off. We really wanted to bring it to a head, just so that the board knows we're serious about this. What exists is something that grew over the years back when there was a prior owner by the name of Sciota. There were a number of additions that were made to the facility. It consists of an existing single-family dwelling and a small cottage also on property. The additions to the single-family dwelling encroached upon minimum side yard requirement and because there were two units on there, I believe it was a non-conforming use. Clearly, when you expand the size of the structure, which was the non-conforming part, it expands, in essence, the actual non-conformity. It is a large parcel. It's not that you have multiple buildings jammed onto a small piece. And what the applicant wants to do is basically apply and obtain this board's approval of the variance that a prior board had approved back, I think it was 2010. There is no question that the applicant was not well represented when they purchased the property. It did not have an updated certificate of occupancy. It has existed in its current state probably for 25 years at a minimum, if not longer. They bought from an estate. They borrowed money from other family members, so there was no bank lender involved, which would have, you know, focused on the CO issue. The applicant is proposing no additions to the existing structure. The footprint that is there is the footprint that would remain. In order to apply to the building department, there is a violation that is pending and we would need a variance of the, primarily the area and the expansion of the non-conforming, subject to whatever conditions the board puts on it. I believe the prior variance imposed a condition of the applicant processing the paperwork, complying with codes, and getting updated certificates of occupancy within a period of time. While this matter has been pending, the applicant has been in communication frequently with the building inspector. The building inspector has advised what requirements they need. I don't know if the building inspector has been in touch with the board, but he has told our client that, as recently as today? As recently as today, that if the variance is approved, come in, we'll sit down, we'll go over the permit applications that the variance would allow you to apply for, so that I can complete the necessary inspections. They have one issue, which is a building code issue, that is the expansion into what was formerly an attic area, converting it into a finished area. That would require probably a sprinkler, certainly, if not a sprinkler, exterior safety, approved fire escape. And if that could not be complied with, that section of the structure would have to be restored back to non-habitable. The sheet rock that's up there would have to be removed. The electric would have to be, you know, removed, essentially putting it back into, quote, "an attic status." Presently, it's not being used for anything other than storage. And, you know, that's been discussed again with the building department. So, basically, we're asking for no additional square footage. We're just asking for the ability to legitimize what is currently in place and has been in place for decades. I will say, when our clients moved in, they were a bit surprised because they had not had a property inspection done. They discovered that the house had never been properly winterized. Heating system was shot. The plumbing system was shot. The sinks were ruined. Bathroom facilities had all been cracked. Then they went to get insurance on the building. And when the insurance agents sent their inspector out, they, it was determined that there were a large number of trees that either had to be removed or significantly trimmed just to bring the structure back to its insurable status. And as is typical, and this is not a complaint, just a comment, the assessor's office, which does not, is not bound by whether or not something is legal, they are bound only to value the property based upon what they see, has been carrying it at a valuation of, I think about $150,000 more than was paid for the, for the buildings. So it's been carrying a full value assessment for years, which has not been challenged. Again, has no impact on the zoning requirements. It's not that it was a secret, it was unknown. It's been a known and existing problem. And the only good news for the town of Monroe is they were collecting the taxes as if it had been a fully approved facility. I have Mrs. Campbell with me. If the board has any questions, I don't know if you want to open it up to the public, but I think that's essentially the information that we have for you.
I have some notes from last night, but the issues that were identified in the --
Can you speak to --
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I was just wondering, the issues that were identified in the original variance requirements, are those, are those being addressed or have been addressed? I mean, if we went down a checklist, would we --
Well, we're in a catch-22 in that your building inspector says he can't approve or go out and inspect anything until we make an application. He wouldn't accept an application because there's a violation pending. Actually, Elizabeth --
Yeah, so we need to get the variance first, is what he said to me. And then we can go on with the permits and go on, you know, with the --
Okay, so that's actually holding up the work itself?
Yeah.
Some of the work itself?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just to be clear, there's no additions. You're just trying to legitimize what is already pre-existing?
No expansion whatsoever of what's in place and has been in place.
Yeah, it has been there for 40 years.
Pull your mic up. I'm sorry. The, the area that was, in the attic that was built out and made habitable, is that, how big an area is that square footage-wise? I mean, I just wondered how big a deal that would be if that was, you know, a no-go.
Well, that is, that particular one is a building code issue. Quite frankly, if we can't satisfy the building inspector with the, it's more fire than anything else.
So he hasn't even rendered an opinion, an official --
Oh, he's rendered an opinion.
He told me, either we, A, get the sprinkler system throughout the house, or B, tear it down.
Okay.
Just could tear it down or tear it out, which --
Tear it down to the boards, like he said, just the, you know, take out the plumbing, take, because there's a bathroom up there.
Oh, okay.
So you have to take out the plumbing and down to the boards.
Remove the finished elements.
Making an unfinished attic again.
Yes.
Yeah, make it uninhabitable space.
Correct.
And if you don't mind me asking, is there a, are you leaning towards a certain way, getting the sprinkler system?
Sprinkler system.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Reinicki, this matter is calendered this evening for a public hearing, but your survey or sketch, sketch plan for this property is not completed. Are you still working on that?
I did talk to Ben. He said that he's not requiring the survey for this. If you want me to get something specifically, though, I can. I'm on a waiting list right now.
The issue that was identified when you started this process is that this board doesn't know what the variant, the side yard variances are that you, that you're requesting without that map.
Right. Okay, so I'm on a waiting list right now for that, for the surveyor.
So, Mr. Chairman, from a procedural standpoint, my suggestion is that we open the public hearing, and then it may have to be continued for us to receive that map and for further public input, should that be required or necessary. But procedurally, perhaps you wouldn't want to open the public hearing at this time. And I think we still need to hear from Mr. Reinicki with respect to the five factors necessary for yard, I'm sorry, for area variances. So maybe you want to speak to that at some point, but let's open the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
With second.
Order in favor.
Aye.
Now, are you going to explain to us a little bit more detail?
I, I will. And, and since we're now in the official public hearing, I'll just repeat a little bit of what we have gone over, you know, pre-meeting, that the applicant is here seeking the necessary variances to allow an application to be processed by the building department, enabling the issuance of building permits, which would then allow the inspections. And if he's satisfied, it would allow for certificates of occupancy.
I understand. That's correct.
That's, that's the basis of why we're here.
We want to see what are the variances? How much footage? Where is the house located? How, how much is it encroaching into the, to the code? That's what we want to see.
Yeah. That's, that is the survey, which although ordered, is still on a waiting list for a crew to get out. The, Mrs. Campbell had gone to an architect in Monroe who arranged, contacted his surveyor. He's good. He knows what has to go on things. He'll get it done for you. She contacted him and has been on that waiting list. He must be the only surveyor in the county that I know of that takes two months to get out and do a, you know, essentially a lot survey. But we are on that waiting list. He is working, he will work with the architect, who will present the necessary plans to the building department. So we do not have that survey present. We would request that the board, because this has been pending a while, we put it over the last meeting or so, we would ask that the board allow us to complete our presentation this evening and then continue the hearing, so that when the survey is available for the board's review, you can physically see on paper the area in question.
Okay.
And I apologize. I think I missed, so you're on a waiting list for, for a surveyor now?
Correct.
Why are we set on this own, this one surveyor? Are there any other surveyors that aren't with waiting list?
I mean, I could try another one also, but the architect suggested him. That's why, that's why I went with him.
The architect recommended, basically said, "This surveyor I work with, I'd like you to have him do the work."
Okay.
I can check around, though.
Yeah, only for a matter of expediting things.
Yeah, I definitely want to get those, those, I'm sorry.
And, and I know we just --
Pull your mic down a little bit.
Sorry, sorry. I thought I projected well enough. So I had notes from, from the last meeting, Robert. Just refresh my memory, if you could, please. So the, the violations that are in place now, there was an original variance for the two violations that required some conditions that I have some notes that --
I don't recall if the violations came first or the variances came first, but there was a prior variance issued for this project in 2012.
There was.
I think Mr. Reinicki said 10, but I think it was 12.
Yeah, I think it was 2012.
That variance, you have a copy of it in your application materials. They had applied for multiple variances at the time. In the decision from the board at that time, there was a side yard setback, which was too small for the right rear cottage. The applicant at that time sought a 22-foot, 6-inch variance from the present zoning standards for the side yard with respect to that right rear cottage. They also had, or had proposed to increase in existing non-conforming use. The main dwelling was increased unlawfully from 32 feet by 36 feet to 47 feet, 2 feet by 48 feet 6 inches, which was a violation of the code provision.
So there were variances granted for those two violations?
Correct.
Were there conditions attached to them?
There were.
And I think where we're stuck is the conditions weren't met? Is that why we're --
Yeah, because that was the previous owner.
Right, so those are the two violations that they're seeking variances for today?
I don't know. There may be additional violations, but they're seeking, my understanding, this is a rehearing on that prior application, so those would be the two variances before the board this evening.
Correct.
A side yard variance for the rear right cottage and a variance to allow what was then and now an existing non-conforming use to be increased in size.
And do we have any record of what the conditions were?
Yes, they're in the decision. There are two conditions. One, no physical structure on the premises may be enlarged under any circumstances, regardless of whether the same would comply with any variance granted herein. And I believe my recollection is that that has not occurred.
That is my understanding. It has not occurred while the Campbells have owned the property. We don't believe --
When you have your survey done, it'll show the size of existing structures today, and you'll be able to determine whether or not that's been violated or not.
Correct.
And the second condition was the applicant was to pay, this is a little wordy, "an amount equal to the amount of lost town taxes for the unlawful additions to the structures on the property." Said amount shall only be for town taxes, but the same shall not be deemed a tax. The percentage shall be the value of any improvements not appearing on the approved plans and existing tax record multiplied by the town tax rate, only town taxes, no district, library, school, or county taxes, for the tax years with taxable status dates of March 1, 2009, 10, and 11, payable at the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. The assessor shall determine the difference in valuation between the actual property and the property as approved, and notify the clerk of the ZBA, who shall notify the applicant. And that was, those were the two conditions. It was five members in favor, zero opposed. It was dated May 17, 2012.
Right. And both of those variances were given to the previous owner?
That is correct.
Do you know if the second condition, I think I know the answer, was the second condition met? Do you know?
My, we do not have actual knowledge, given that the estate, it was an estate, and they did nothing in terms of moving forward to obtain the certificates of occupancy. They let the house go into disrepair, again, not properly winterizing. So I would be very much surprised if they tendered any payments on it.
Now, after a certain, I'm sorry, so after a certain time, is the, is it capped or those taxes are ongoing from, I guess, whenever the violation was implemented where, I guess, the county lost the tax money? Because I believe it, Ms. Dickover, you said that they had to, they had to render any taxes lost?
Wouldn't it be when I obtained the house, or --
Right, so was it ca, is, so it's not, it's capped at the, the time of purchase for Ms. Campbell?
Well, the prior variance was, was limited to a number of years that they were trying to recapture.
Okay.
My guess of what they were doing was they probably learned that the house had been expanded in 2009. It was 2012 when they heard the matter, so they were looking to recapture unassessed value.
For two years?
For those, well, 9, 10, and 11.
Okay.
Because they were in 12 at the time.
Gotcha.
May, May of 2012.
Currently, the assessment on the property translates into an estimated full market And that's what the applicant has been paying on. And, and just to give you an idea, the, the property was purchased for $150,000.
The letter? Yeah.
Any other questions?
I was just going to say, if, if we were entertaining similar, similar ideas for conditions, I think we'd have to look at, you know, we don't know, we don't know what was paid, how much they caught up on their taxes from before. We'd have to look at how much has been paid based on the value. I mean, it would be something we --
You would look at?
Look at the numbers and see what, what makes sense, if you know what I mean.
We understand.
Yeah.
We understand.
Because it sounds like, from what you're saying to us, you're, you're being, you're, the taxes you're paying may be on something that's more valuable than what you, what you really have at this, at this moment. But we'd need to see that.
Right. We would, we would have to, we would have to provide for this board, probably the simplest thing would be copies of what's on the assessor's card, you know, and the values that they placed on it.
Right. Robert, what, why is there, if, if the variance was originally granted, why is it in violation again?
Time passed.
Time, it expired by virtue of not having complied with the conditions.
Well, one of them didn't have a timeline. It was just that they couldn't, there couldn't be any, any increase to the size of the existing structures. The, I could understand maybe the tax condition had a, had a timeline.
Well, I think, I think part of the problem was, and it's ironic, because when I first was contacted by the Campbells, I remembered having conversations with the executrix who elected not to use our services. And I explained, you know, when they told me what their problems were, that, that there was a, you know, additions that no certificates of occupancy were obtained, I explained to her that if you want to truly market it at full value, you need to get certificates of occupancy for those additions. Because certainly, codes were in effect, you know, in 70s and 80s, when, when these things were being done. And although it does not appear in the decision, I'm pretty sure that the intent was that with the variances, you then go to the building department, so you can get the certificate of occupancy, so that you can market it as, you know, a compliant structure.
So basically, they would have, they needed to go through the same steps or similar steps that you're going through now, and that's, besides those conditions, that's what they didn't do?
Yeah.
Okay. See, I mean, they felt the conditions are on top of getting everything up to code.
I assume that's written somewhere in the original variance approval. Is it, you know, here with the --
Well, I think on the original variance application, they, they were seeking, in addition to the variances, the, the authority to apply for a building permit.
The other thing that occurred here is this application was originally brought, is appealing the building inspector's letter of March 2011, which was the original violation letter. And the appeal was untimely at that time. You may, this has a little bit of a history, but I don't, I think you folks were with the board in January of this year. You were certainly here. That application has been recast by Mr. Reinicki now, on behalf of his client, seeking a rehearing of the variance that was previously granted, because an appeal of a 2011 determination would be untimely. So the way to get the matter before this board now is to rehear the prior variance.
Any other question?
More of a comment. I think a critical piece of information that I'd need to see is that survey. Right, so as quick as we can get that, that'll --
So then I just, I would have to do the complete survey. You don't want just the, the measurements from the --
No, no, the survey, again, survey is, we went over this. It's the outline of the property with the location of the buildings shown on the property. That's, that's what this board would look at to confirm that the distance today is the same distance, because we're requesting that, you know, we, we get the prior variances that were sought, which an earlier board determined were reasonable under those circumstances. It's our understanding that prior to our ownership, there was no expansion of the structures. We can tell you from personal knowledge that from the time they acquired it, there's been no expansion of the structures. But we don't have that missing piece in between.
Yep.
Does the town have survey in file from the last variance request?
I do not, I have not found one as of yet.
I'd want to see a current one, anyway.
I was going to say, because that's, that's something that we, you know, that's, that's pretty well established. We get a New York licensed surveyor to give us the ground truth at the current time. I mean, that's --
I completely understand. The, the reason that we came in is that the matter has been pending, it's been adjourned a couple of times, and, and we really did want to bring the board current with where we're at, and, you know, let anybody in the neighborhood who's interested know what we're doing as well. But I couldn't agree with you more.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, there is someone here from the public for this hearing, I believe.
Anybody in the property that would want to talk about this matter, please step up.
You don't want to?
Yeah, well, I, I, what I heard.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I had a note from, from our meeting in August, that we actually opened the public hearing and then tabled it that evening. Publication had been completed, I understand, but we needed proof of the mailings.
I have that. 18 were mailed out. I've received six back. There are still 12 out, but I have proof that everything went out prior to seven days before the meeting.
Thank you. So, Mr. Reinicki, do you want to address the five factors this evening, or do you want to hold off on it until we see what the map looks like?
I'm, I'm open to the board's preference. It probably would be easier if you have a survey print in front of you. I have no difficulty discussing them this evening, but you don't have a point of preference. We do have some signatures from a couple of the -- We do have some signatures from a couple of the property owners who supported the application, which we have for the record. And again, it's part of the elements. You know, we don't think we're changing any, we know we're not changing anything, but to make it a concise presentation, probably with the survey in place is better. Okay. So we're going to make a motion to table it for the next month, when you're going to bring in the survey, so we could see what we have, and discuss it at that time. That's correct. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your patience.
No problem. Have a nice night.
While on the subject of timeliness, re-hearing and things like that, did you ever speak with Ben?
Yes, and it is in his letters now. He showed me one the other day.
What is the timeline?
Thirty days.
Thirty days?
Yes. The next hearing is November 20, sorry, I need a new contact, 28th, and the deadline is November, I skipped the whole month of October. I apologize.
Yeah, I was going to say-
October 24th, and the cutoff is Tuesday, October 3rd. So if you can't get it by then, it might have to be put off till the November hearing.
That's fine.
So that's what you would think?
I don't know, no. I don't want to say anymore on the evening.
I would say- As long as your meeting's not on the 23rd. That's my wife's birthday, and if I don't take her out to dinner, it causes all sorts of issues.
Yes, and I'll make a copy and I'll give it to the board and I'll put it in the folder. Thank you. So if you can get in touch with me, if you can get it by the 3rd, then we can get you on for October. Otherwise, it would have to wait. So I would try to, I don't know any surveyors, to be honest, but Ben might be able to lead you in some direction. Okay? You're welcome.
Good night.
You're not meeting the Tuesday of Thanksgiving, are you?
No, it's the week after.
I'm going to be optimistic.
I was just going to say, come on. I know I read November 28th. Week after.
Next item on the agenda, Monroe Lakeside Fire and Rescue Company and Corp., Section 38, Block 10, Lot 4, 145 West Manbasha Road, area variance for a new firehouse sign, pictures included.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
Good evening.
State your name, please.
Gerald Frioli, Monroe Lakeside Fire and Rescue Company.
Did we get the mailings?
Tim Staley, Volunteer Fire Department, Lakeside.
Thank you.
Yeah, she has all the mailings.
Yes. They had a very strange, and I've never seen it. I don't know whether anybody else has. He mailed out all of his mailings very early. We got a large portion back, but we also got all of these back saying unclaimed.
Wow.
I don't know whether anybody else has seen this, but when I mentioned it at the office today, they told me they had never seen it before.
Then we checked all the addresses.
They had to send, I wrote them, they had to send out 35. 14 have been returned. Nine are unclaimed, and 12, we have nothing, have come back on. But I have proof that they all went out, that he sent them. But I've never seen all this come back. And I even went to Mary Ellen, she's like, I don't think I've ever seen that many come back. Maybe one or two.
Is it the applicant's responsibility to pull the addresses, or do we provide-
We get it from the assessor's office.
That so does-
They do a 300 radius, yeah, from the mapping system that they use. But he brought everything in, and it was in the newspaper, and it was posted in our townhouse. It was sent to the Village of Monroe, and I don't remember where I, Harriman, and Woodbury, I believe, I sent them all out to.
Nobody likes to get real mail anymore, huh?
No.
I'd never seen this, when he dropped it off, I was like, oh my gosh, I've never seen that.
These people don't pay tax a lot. It comes from the assessor's office, right?
Yeah, maybe, maybe they're hiding.
Wanted, maybe, who knows?
Okay, any changes to the sign?
No changes currently. The company did offer to give us another square footage and width. We haven't addressed that yet. It would just be a 12 foot by 12 foot, 12 inch by 12 inch added to the screen, if any change was to be made, but as of right now, we're happy with what we have.
How about the clearing of the road, a little bit, of those trees?
Believe it or not, I looked into some of those trees, have been removed. Our neighbor to the south had trimmed those all back. I'm going to talk with my neighbors to the north to see if they can get some clearing there for us. That way to get some more visibility on the sign would be great. Thank you for the suggestion. Appreciate it.
I thought maybe those trees are in the right of way of the, the road is serviced by the county?
Town, town or county, I'm not sure which, who takes care of the road, to be honest.
Because if it's in the right of way, that belongs to the, they should be able to take care of it.
Absolutely. We were just discussing that earlier today, that we could always have them do it if there's-
The town of Monroe does it sometimes.
Yes, yes.
I've seen them take care of this kind of matter, and it's a safety issue.
They did. As a matter of fact, I do remember them on Lakes Road trimming everything back, but that was the county, not the town. I will look further into it for sure to get that extra visual aid.
That's safety, the- The town is doing it for safety sometime. The utility company is doing good if there's overheads, wires.
Correct, yes.
Did, will we clarify if there was any, I guess, stipulation on how long the sign was able to be illuminated at night?
You guys did mention that last time. I did say that we were going to cut it off at 12 o'clock at night.
Okay.
It would just be a black, just a blackout. The sign's still on, but it's all blacked out. The only reflection would be from the actual sign itself that says Monroe Lakeside.
Okay, so there wasn't a, a certain time period that you weren't able to have it illuminated?
No, there was no stipulation on that, just as-
Well, we have went over that and discussed that between us, that if we had any complaints with somebody's eyes during their bedroom or whatever, we would adjust it. You know, we would go from 5 to 10, 5 to 9, whatever, for the community.
But there's no, there's no existing code for-
Negative.
I know they're talking about that in various towns, but I-
Yeah, we just want to be polite about it, neighborly about it.
And we haven't seen how, how much it would illuminate the street as of yet, because we don't have the-
Correct. But those are also dimmable settings, which we're actually able to manipulate through the computer. Anywhere from, let's say, 100%, we can knock it down to 75% to 50%, so that way the brightness is not overwhelming. Amazing what you could do with these signs.
And I believe you said that it could be on a timer anyway, so-
Yes, we have a program that will be set up ahead of time, and it'll automatically come on by itself, and it'll automatically shut off by itself. It's going to take me a little time to get used to fiddling with it, to get everything working properly, but we'll make sure we'll have it squared away.
Which is another good thing to make a point, is we're also a shelter, so if the power did go out, it'd be on the generator. So it'd be advised when the public knows that there's a shelter available, only see the sign, and know that's where to go, and it won't be a blackout.
Were there any concerns from neighbors?
I've heard nothing.
We've had positive interaction with our neighbors. They're all looking forward to seeing it. None of them has voiced a concern about the brightness, but they are definitely looking forward to having it there.
Gives it a little bit of life to the area.
Correct, yeah. Like I stated before, you could drive right through there and not even realize there's a fire station there. And hopefully it'll also slow people down in that area too, to, you know, pay attention.
Yeah, so I went by, I saw the sign that's there now, it's pretty small.
Yeah, I've been up here since 93.
93.
And I never knew there was one there until one day I looked and saw the flag, and I come from my plains, oh, you know, to come back home, but I was astonished when I saw it. I was like, wow, it's a fire alarm. You know, 10 years later, I didn't even know. Which is, that's another point for the sign, though, because we need volunteers. You know, we can only do so much for volunteers and do a function at the fire station, which we have done, and nobody shows up.
Very unsuccessful.
The sign will be so helpful for us, for the shelter, for the community, you know, for volunteers, I mean, this is something that we really would-
Polling stations, I mean, it's endless what you could do.
We could make off the hall that we have, you know? But nobody really knows a lot.
As long as the firehouse has been up, the shelter has been available?
Since 1947.
Okay.
Correct.
Can I walk you through a couple of things, just from a housekeeping standpoint, Mr. Chairman? The 239 referral on this, Noreen, I have a cover letter that looks like it wasn't maybe sent, this is a question rather than a statement. It's dated September 13. Was the application sent to county planning before that?
It was definitely sent. I don't remember, yeah, I don't remember the day I sent it. I'm sorry.
Because they have 30 days within which to comment. Do we have a comment letter back from them yet?
No, I have not gotten one.
All right, because they have 30 days to comment back. I would anticipate that it's going to be a matter for local determination, but the board can't render a decision on it until we have that letter. So it'd be a defective determination if we were to do that. So if the date of the transmittal letter is as it shows on what you sent to me, it wasn't until September 13, so 30 days has not lapsed yet. So that's number one. Number two, we do need to do a secret review on this, Mr. Chairman, because it's an unlisted action. I think the members have in your packet a short form EAF. If you would like, we could do that this evening. You have sufficient information to get through that. And if you'd like, I can walk you through that, I think. I need you to just find it, give me a moment. Just for housekeeping, we would need a motion by a member to declare yourselves lead agency for seeker purposes, and to type this action as an unlisted one.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
All right, I have a short form EAF, Part 1, project and sponsor information, Lakeside Fire and Rescue Company, and out for an LED sign at Section Block and Lot 38104. They're seeking an LED sign, 6 feet 8 inches long, double-sided. I think from the time that you were here last month, that the size of that sign was clarified?
Correct. We did amend it to a-
Let's see if I have this right. It was 7 feet 4 inches from the ground to the top of the sign, and it was 6 feet wide?
Correct.
All right, so that-
I got 7 foot 6 from the bottom to the top, and the sign itself is 6 feet, not including the holes on the end, according to this drawing here.
So it's 7 feet 6 inches by 6. All right, so we should, in the original EAF in the board's file, Noreen, if you have that, you can amend the brief description portion to show the dimensions of the sign as 7 feet 6 inches by 6 feet. The applicant's telephone number and address is also in Part 1. And the first question, does the proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of a plan, local ordinance, administrative rule, or regulation? Answered, no. Two, does the action require a permit approval or funding from any other government agency? No. Three, total acreage of this site is not completed. Do you recall coming in, perhaps, and giving us an amended EAF?
I see, I have this one, there's less than 0.1.
Yeah, I'm working off the wrong one. Hang on.
This might be the updated one.
It may have an updated one.
Less than 0.1 acres, what this one says.
Thanks. I've got it. Here you go, you can have it right back. 3A, total acreage of the site greater than 0.1 acres, that to be physically disturbed greater than 0.1, total acreage under control, 1 acre. Four, checked off residential as being the type of usage, or lane usage around the project site. Five, is the action a permitted use under the zoning ordinance? Yes. Consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan? Yes. Six, is the action consistent with predominant character of the same builder and natural landscape? Yes. Seven, is the site located or does it adjoining a critical environmental area? No. 8A, will the action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? No. Are public transportation services available at or near the site? Yes. And C, are any pedestrian accommodations or bike routes available on or near the site of the proposed action? Yeah, no. Nine, does the action meet or exceed state energy requirements? It's answered, no. Probably should be on the line underneath that, just not applicable, N/A, although state energy code requirements, the answer should be changed to yes. It's going to be a modern sign, it's going to meet state energy code requirements. So that answer, Noreen, on your official copy, number nine, should be changed to yes.
Uh huh.
10, will the action connect to an existing public-private water supply? No. 11, to an existing wastewater utility? No. 12A, does the site contain a structure that's listed on either state or national register of historic places? No. Is the action located in archaeological sensitive area? No. 13, does any portion of the site adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies? No. Would the proposed action physically alter or encroach into an existing wetland or water body? No. 14, identify the typical habitat? And mine is not checked off.
Neither is mine.
Should probably be answered as suburban.
Correct.
So we can do that on the board's copy. That's number 14.
Got it, thank you.
15, does the site of the action contain any species of animal or associated habitats? No. 16, is the site located in a 100-year flood plain? No. 17, will the action create stormwater discharge? No. Turn the page to three. Number 18, does the proposed action include construction or other activities that result in the impoundment of water or other liquids? No. 19, has the site of the action or adjoining property been the location of active or closed solid waste management facility? No. And 20, has the site of the proposed action or adjoining property been the subject of remediation ongoing for hazardous waste? No. Signed by the sponsor, dated July 31, 17.
Mr. Dickover, I'm sorry. 8B, are public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action? That was a yes?
It's answered no on the sheet that I have.
I have a no.
Anything to add, Mr. Chairman?
No.
All right, based on those reports, the board could review the Part 2, which I don't have. Hang on. So, Mr. Chairman, based on those, yeah, I can't do, we need the Part 2. Do you have that? Probably not.
No, I have the original applicant file with me, and you should have everything that I have.
All right, here are the Part 2 questions. Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adjoining land use plan or zoning regulation? No or small impact? I'll say it again, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? This is for the board, this is for the board's answering the question.
Well, that's what they're seeking, advantage.
The proposed action is the construction of a sign with side yard variances. Will that action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? They're here for that. The question is that, no, or is it a small impact?
Small impact.
I would suggest to you it's a small impact. We would answer the question accordingly. Number two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Will the action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Will the action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkways?
No.
Will the action cause an increase in the use of energy, and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the action-
Probably made energy savings anyhow on that.
Will the action impact existing public or private water supplies?
No.
Public or private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the action impair the character or- Will the action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the action result in an adverse change to natural resources?
No.
Will the action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Will the action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Mr. Chairman, based on those answers, a member of the board could make a motion to, could make a motion that the proposed action will not result in any.
Impact.
In any adverse environmental impacts, and a negative declaration could be issued.
I'd like to make, make a motion for that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's accepted.
Let the record reflect that there are no members of the public present this evening to speak either for or against the application. Mr. Chairman, if the board is satisfied, you could accept a motion to grant the variances as requested.
I would like to make a motion to grant the variance for the sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We still have to wait for...
You're right, Mr. Chairman. We can't, we can't accept that motion this evening because the 239 referral.
Is that possible to make a contingent?
The board's, you know, it's, it's, it's not gonna make it. Probably not a good idea, because they could comment on the environmental factors that we just went through, and the board can't act on it until next month anyway. So a conditional really is not gonna do you any good. We have to receive that letter officially from the department.
Okay.
So, somebody like to rescind that motion that was just made.
I'd like to rescind the motion that was just made.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The, the whole secret review, though, is still?
Secret's done. Secret's done. You need the 239. The secret review process is completed. We need to receive the letter from the county planning department. Presumably, we'll have that by next month. And at that time, appropriate motion could be made.
So we just need to vote on that at the time?
Yeah, and if you want, you can close the public hearing this evening.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for this issue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We gotta wait.
A motion to table the matter to the next regular meeting of the board.
Make a motion to table this matter for the next month.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you next month.
I guess so. It's okay, guys. It's not your fault.
I'll check with Megan and see how the letter's going.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. So we can't even start putting down the pad for, we can't do nothing until this is finalized, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We did everything until we're...
Just waiting on the county, absolutely. Not a problem.
Well, thank you both for your service.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.